Farouh Hamood, she's on her way.
Androuk, yes.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here.
Mary Petlicoff.
Here.
James Thorpe, here.
Next item, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Susan Stanley, Principal of Salina Elementary School, will introduce the students who will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you so much, and I am proud to introduce. Here we have Bayan Alamuri. We have Nadine Alatari. We have Amar Al-Gharazi, and we have Ibrahim Abdullah. And they are our student leadership team. They are playwork coaches and our safeties at Salina School. So it's very fitting that they lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, would you like to step up here?
All right then. Amar?
Amar.
Thank you so much. And you, are you Ibrahim Abdullah? Very good, thank you so much. And Nadine?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. And Yaseer? Oh, wait, may I?
So hers, yes, I couldn't make it. Oh, okay. So we didn't know that, so we'll get Bayan.
We will make sure you get one of these and we'll send it over to the school. Thank you so much.
We always appreciate our student body. Next item, please.
Superintendent's update, agenda items. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to start with a couple of difficult things that we need to discuss. First is, it's been a difficult weekend with the passing of a student, Lareen Ahmed, from Henry Ford Elementary. Yesterday was very difficult. I learned of the news at about 9:00 a.m. Sunday. And, you know, our thoughts and prayers go out to their family, to the entire Henry Ford Elementary community, to Dearborn Schools community. I want to, you know, let everyone know that our staff, it's difficult for staff, it's difficult for students, it's difficult for the community. I know several of us were at the mosque last night to pay our respects. I went there. I appreciate trustee Barry, who was there with me and allowed me to introduce me to the family, but I just can't imagine what it's like to lose a child. And so, our thoughts and prayers go out to the family. I also wanted to mention that, you know, we try to give the family space and their wishes, and we always wait and we never put out any public statements until we get permission from the family. We do the same with staff. And so, we kind of want to give them their space and our-
And privacy.
-privacy. Our principal is always in contact with the families when unfortunately any of these tragedies occur. So I want to, my condolences to the staff, and I want to commend the staff for working together to support the families in the community. I saw several teachers who were at the hospital, several teachers, the principal. The principal was on the phone with me about eight times, central office administrators yesterday, trying to comfort the family. I believe they were there for hours. And so, you know, it's a very difficult, very difficult day. We do have a plan in place to provide families with support, and so this morning, myself and several administrators were at the building first thing in the morning to provide support. And we had a meeting with parents and with faculty. We have social workers on site to provide support as necessary. We also have employee assistance program. So, you know, when we go, when we have positive things in the district, we celebrate together, but when we have adversity, that's one of the great things about Dearborn Schools, is we come together. And again, you know, it's a very difficult day, difficult for me to talk about this now. And, you know, one of the things I also just have to mention is that we, you know, due to privacy rights, federal and state, we cannot give out specific details of incidents. Having said that, I do want to reassure, you know, the community that we have been working with the family throughout and working with the staff to provide comfort. And so, I would like us to, you know, recognize the difficulty they're going through, and if we could please take a moment of silence for the loss of a student. Thank you, everyone. I also want to mention that I know the PTA and the PTA Council is working with the principal on a candlelight vigil at 4:00 p.m. on Thursday at Henry Ford. And again, we always make sure we get the permission of the family before we would implement that, and we do have that permission. So, those that want to pay their respects, you know, that'll be there Thursday. I will not be able to make it because I'm going to the National Conference of Superintendents, but we'll have representation there from administration. So, it brings me to another moment we'll take right now. Difficult week in Dearborn. Today, members of my team and I, and I know board members, paid respects to Congressman Dingle, as Elaine stated, at the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center. On behalf of the board, myself, and our entire staff, we offer our most sincere condolences to Congresswoman Debbie Dingle and their entire family. We join with thousands of other community members in honoring this great civic leader who dedicated his life to serving his country, his state, and all people in our community. Congressman Dingle was always a strong supporter of public education and paid attention to the schools and the communities he represented. And even more important, he listened. Congressman Dingle was passionate about the issues that were important to him and his community, but at the same time, was always respectful in his approach to working with others in his party and across the aisle. Congressman Dingle made many visits to the Dearborn Public Schools over his long political career, but not all of his visits were ceremonial. In 2000, after two consecutive bond proposals were defeated, he joined with the mayor, city council president, and other civic leaders to host a special community meeting. In typical fashion for the congressman, he started the meeting by explaining that there was no political agenda for the evening. His interest was solely to build bridges and help people come together to communicate their needs and concerns in order to strengthen the community and the school district. In 2010, staff, students, and community members gathered at Etzel Ford High School to dedicate the school's Freedom Wall, a collection of historical documents donated by the Exchange Club in honor of Congressman Dingle. The documents, along with a plaque recognizing Congressman Dingle, can be found in the main hallway of the school. And in 2012, the congressman took part in the rededication ceremony when a memorial to a Dearborn veteran was moved from Poorass Park in Dearborn to Fortston High School. Our nation has lost a legendary leader, a caring and dedicated public servant, and we in Dearborn have lost a friend. I'd like to ask us to pause for a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. So I will move on with my commentary. We do have some retirements as agenda items. Donald Merrick, over 35 years of service. Robin Thompson, over 29 years of service. David Barber, over 18 years of service. And Christine Siperly, 20 years of service. I want to thank them and congratulate them on their retirement, if we could show our appreciation right now. And that's it for agenda items? Non-agenda items? Thank you. Trustee Thorpe? So I'm going to call up, right now, we have Mr. Wall with Infrastructure Bond.
Thank you. Paul Terio from Plant Moran Cressa is also going to join me.
Okay.
All right, and just to make sure that we keep the board updated, we're going to do a really brief, because we did a nice longer presentation at the Building and Site Committee earlier today. And with that, I'm going to let Paul start the discussion.
Great, thank you, Tom. I'm Paul Terio with Plant Moran Cressa. I'm the director of our Program Management Group. We help a lot of clients plan big capital projects, as we're doing for the district. Wanted to just walk through some of the tasks that we were charged with and kind of where we're at to date with progress. You can see on the slide, the first thing was kind of just kind of getting the team together, making sure we are clear on what the scope of the assignment was, and doing a lot of digging into previous documents, past bond issues, past facility assessments, drawings, floor plans, site plans, things of that nature. The Facility and Maintenance Team has been a great help to us, a great resource to help get us up to speed with what they've done in the past and help us understand the needs of the district. On the same token, the administration has been a great help to us, understanding some of the committees that have been put together in the past and what the priorities of the district are, whether it's curriculum or other things that you guys have going on. Obviously, Dearborn's a unique district in the state with some of the historical buildings that you guys have and some newer ones as well. So, as we're going through, we're always looking to try to make things as equitable as we can, but when you have a building that's 10 years old and another one or 20 years old and another one that's maybe pushing 100, that can be a challenge sometimes. So, coming together and getting started, I think we've got off to a great start here in December and January. We've, if you look at Phase Two here, again, been meeting with a lot of the administrators and understanding those important facts. We're also starting to schedule meetings with building principals so that we can understand their perspective. They're in the buildings day to day, they know what is working, what's not working, what's functioning, and what challenges they have. We've also surveyed all the building engineers, so they're the ones that are making sure those mechanical, electrical systems are up and running on a daily basis. They know what problems there are. So we're really listening a lot, and we're going out with our eyes wide open to make sure that we're really understanding the district, because it's a little bit unique, obviously. So that's kind of been December and January. As we move forward, you know, capital planning for a big district like Dearborn Public Schools can be a challenge when you have, again, so many different buildings, so many different facilities and programs. You want to make sure you listen and hear everyone and that you don't miss anything, trying to read between the lines a little bit. But there is kind of a formula to it, so we've got a lot of data to collect, a lot of buildings to walk, and interviews to have with people. And then as we start to put all the data together, you know, we're looking at different building systems, so I mentioned a few of mechanical and electrical. We're also looking at parking lots, roofs, athletic facilities, you know, doors and hardware, windows, all the way down into crawling through tunnels and climbing up on roofs. So, we're really trying to make sure that we leave no stone unturned and really listen and let everybody have their input on the process. So, as we walk through putting all that together, it will be, you know, a pretty big 10-year capital plan is really what we're calling it. So, we know the district has certain means to finance portions of the work, but if you look at, you know, the needs of a district your size over a 10-year period, unfortunately, the state doesn't always fund all of those needs, as we all well know. So, we'll be looking at it holistically, and then we'll have to sit down and kind of prioritize what those needs are. We typically look at it as critical needs, kind of some deferred maintenance, and then enhancements. So, we'll be looking to the district to really lead that effort. Once we kind of get everything down on one sheet of paper, so to speak, the district will really help us prioritize what the needs are, building by building, and then holistically. So, kind of jumped around a little bit. As we talk about funding mechanisms, obviously, one of the potential ones is a bond. If that's a qualified bond, the state does have some pretty rigorous steps that they put you through with all the forms they want you to fill out about building utilization and costs. So we're trying to keep an eye on that as well to make sure that the data we collect is in the right format. So if the district does decide to go out for a bond, that that'll be a seamless process, and we'll be able to meet the timeline that would be involved there. So, so as you can see, December, January have been great. February, we're full speed ahead. We have six or seven different people working on the project, and March and April are going to be pretty busy as well. And then once the board makes a decision, we can then take the next steps, working with your financial advisors and legal counsel and administration to really look forward to either November or beyond, so. The other slides are really things that I've already touched on, just some of the activities that we completed in January. I mentioned the meetings with all the administrators and principals and some of the surveys that we did. And then in February, we've really, we've already walked all the high schools and middle schools and a lot of the elementary schools. February, we'll be walking some additional middle schools, or I'm sorry, elementary schools, and then interviewing all the principals will be the big push in February here. And then into March as well, so. And then, the 10-year capital plan, the goal is to be done with that late April, early May, so. This is just kind of a sample report, which we can provide for the board if you'd like to take a look at it. But really, we try to bring everything into a simple report that a layperson can read so that it's not a bunch of engineering and architectural speak, mumbo jumbo that nobody wants to see. So, really trying to make it simple so that if you post it on your website or issue it out to the public, that they can go to their building and find out exactly what needs we found at their building and make sure that everyone's in agreement with the scope, so. Lots of pie charts and tables and such, so. That's kind of it in a nutshell. I don't know if Tom, you want to add anything to that?
No, just the last slide refers to the potential November 5th election date. Everything kind of backs up from the election date of a potential bond. We did, we're notified by the city, there is nothing officially yet on the November 5th ballot besides us, so there would be a cost to us if we maintain it on the November 5th. So we're now starting to look at a potential March date also, but regardless, we're still going to plan the activities as if we're going through the November timeframe. With that, I'll just entertain any questions you might have.
Would moving it to March change any of the parameters of how we would present the bond rolling out?
No, the financial numbers might change slightly, but nothing significant. It would still be a no-mill increase bond issue. And checking with legal counsel, the March date wouldn't have any impact as the November date.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Lane?
Mr. Grzinski, I think, was pointing out to us and Mr. Wall as well, that any delay, so if we push, and trustee Barry, of course, made this point a while ago, and he's exactly spot on, with the election not coinciding with something else, we would have to pay for it. However, delays in starting any projects, we were told, would incur a cost of, we're assuming, 2% to 3% inflation. In fact, building costs are rising faster than that. I think I remember Mr. Grzinski was saying 5% to 7%. So, although we might have to pay for an election, we have to think also-
We might offset it with the construction.
Exactly, and when we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars potentially, it all gets to be escalating really fast.
Right, if we had the November date, we'll be able to mobilize in time to do activity that summer for construction. If we went with a March date, it'd be very hard to mobilize to get anything done that first summer. That's what the point is.
That makes sense, so that has to be taken into consideration as well.
Correct.
Absolutely. Thank you. Trustee Barry?
Yeah, other than the cost of the election, the other point I made the last time we spoke about this is, my opinion is we need a bigger pool of voters making that decision. So if it's done on an off-election year, it's probably going to be, I would, looking at the numbers from past elections, probably going to be anywhere from 12% to 18% maximum if it's going to come out and vote on an election year. Just wanted to leave that on the table.
Well, this year is a little different than most elections, because in November, we would be the only thing on the ballot, but in March, which would normally be like a low turnout election, because it is the presidential primary, there would be a high turnout election. So I think things would be a little different than they normally would be as opposed to March to November.
And so, so we have a lot of moving parts to balance, but one of our priorities is taxpayer dollars.
Absolutely.
And how we spend them, so. And I'm not discounting the voter turnout. I've heard this argument a lot over the years and the need to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to have a say. But if it's going to be in the millions of dollars of cost effectiveness to do the other, then I think that it is then incumbent upon our community members to inform themselves and get out and vote, so that they're still participating at a higher rate. I know that's probably a pipe dream for many, that it doesn't have that kind of turnout, but quite frankly, if I'm looking at, and I don't know what it will be, a differential in costs of millions of dollars to hold the election in November as opposed to waiting until March and then off-putting the start of the construction as well, that will add to the, then I think that we have to have that conversation, as difficult as it might be, as to where our priorities stand.
I'm looking forward to that conversation, because millions of dollars, talking about four to five months difference.
Right, and so we can, we have some time. I want to make sure you guys are at the same age.
Right, we just need, right, and that's all I'm saying, is we just need to make sure that we have, we have all the right facts.
Sure, I agree with you.
Madam President?
Yes, trustee.
Yeah, there, as you say, there are a lot of moving parts to this. The other thing that traditionally was always thrown out also, statewide even, when a school district held an election in March, there was the suspicion that we would, we were putting something on to avoid senior citizens who might be in Florida, or, you know, people argue it pro or con either way. So, you know, we have to decide based on the district's needs. We know we have aging buildings. We know that there are many needs in education. We know that the state dollars that go to education, a lot of those are disguised, they're paying for other things like retirement, healthcare for retirees and so on. So, our, will, our decision will be sound, I am confident. This community has been very supportive, and we have tried to be good stewards. Our staff has been terrific in making sure we're on budget or under budget, and, you know, so it will, it'll be a balanced decision, I have no doubt. On that, on that point, I know that Mr. Wall won some kind of budgeting award recently, so I'd like to thank him for the fine budgeting he's done for our district. And we should also, maybe Dr. Maleko has that upcoming, but, yeah, well, and we should also thank the community, because the reason that we sit so comfortably as a district is because our community has supported education, lower, medium, and higher levels. So we're very fortunate in Dearborn.
We're one of the few communities that are, that are much more financially stable than the surrounding communities. Trustee Thorpe?
Since the November date would be the earlier date that we'd consider putting this on a ballot, when would we need to make a decision as a group to be able to move forward if we went with November?
The latest you could make the decision, it would be July, when you actually have to call the election for November. The planning process for the state, all stays the same. It's just at that point, we even talked briefly at the committee meeting, you can actually defer it from November to March later, but you have so many days to actually call the election before the actual date, and that would be your first, next final deadline.
Part of our report is working with your legal counsel to identify all those dates that we don't miss any of them. Sorry, speaking of the microphone. Oh, sorry.
And we'll be back here up in March with another update, so you'll see us again.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I'll just continue, and I'll just mention, and I appreciate trustee Lane mentioning, you know, we've had a lot of different positive awards and accolades that are helping our students a lot in the student achievement area, growth, things that are going on. We have some tonight, but the operation of the district. And so what trustee Lane was referring to, we received under the leadership of Mr. Wall and his department, it's from the Association of School Business Officials International, and they're recognizing Dearborn's schools for excellent in budget process. And so we got a letter from the national head, and so I would like to, right now, congratulate Mr. Wall and his team and the Board of Education and the entire community for being fiscally responsible. So, and I know he just, his MSBO certification just got renewed. I just received another letter on him, so, great job, Mr. Wall. Okay, I'm going to ask Ms. Mesa Ali Bazey to come up with Ms. Hannah Mahmoud. The, it was a resolution that was passed, I don't know if Ms., yeah, here she is. Yeah, you can come on up, Ms. Mahmoud. I know she wanted to make a couple comments, and Ms. Ali Bazey is going to read the resolution that was passed back in May. Back in May of 2018.
My name is Hannah Mahmoud. I am a recently retired Dearborn Public School teacher. I worked for the district for over 17 years. And recently, I tried to introduce a resolution to make April as Arab American Heritage Month, which is something many states and schools are starting to proclaim. So I'm very happy that Dearborn Public Schools is going to be leading, actually, Michigan in doing that.
You sure you don't want to read it?
No, go ahead.
I tried to encourage Ms. Mahmoud to read the proclamation.
She's not quite out of retirement.
Dearborn Public Schools, yeah, okay. The following resolution was offered by trustee Petlicoff, President Petlicoff, and seconded by trustee Nassar. This was back in June 25th, 2018. Whereas, for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society, in medicine, law, business, technology, government, and culture. And whereas, since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich cultures and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas, they brought them to America with their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. And whereas, Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the opportunistic American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas, the history of Arab Americans in American life often remains neglected or defaced by misunderstanding, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in forms of crimes and speech. And whereas, Arab American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, and bullying must be combated in forms of education and awareness. And whereas, they all join, they all, they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society, where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas, the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped us to build a better nation, and now therefore, for these reasons and many other others be it, resolve that the Dearborn Public School, Schools Board of Education celebrate the contributions Arab Americans have made to society and do hereby claim April of each year to be the National Arab American Heritage Month in Dearborn. This will start in the April of 2019 and encourage all residents to join us in this special observance. Signed, trustee Hussein Barry.
And actually, I believe it was trustee Hamood who brought that motion forward last year.
I think it was championed originally also by Judge Bazey as well. I think she was another one who, early on.
Thank you.
And we all approved it.
Yes, we all approved it.
I just also want to say that as an Arab American and a resident of Dearborn and a retired Dearborn Public School teacher, it is really an honor to be here today for the declaration of the proclamation of Arab American Heritage Month. And I definitely would like to thank Dr. Maleko, the superintendent, and your distinguished board members for approving the proclamation. And on behalf of Arab America and online digital network for Arab Americans, I would like to thank the community at large, as well as those who have supported and joined us today in honoring our heritage by sharing it with others. And I would like to present this little art, Palestinian Arab stitching art, to the board, like, as a symbol of our heritage.
Beautiful.
Dr. Maleko, thank you so much. And I have also a state representative, Mr. Abdullah Hamud. He's going to say a few words.
Good evening, trustees. Abdullah Hamud, proud McDonald Panther, proud Woodworth Hornet, proud Fortson Tractor, proud Hanyford College duellin' rolee, proud lifelong Dearborn resident. And I just wanted to thank you all for passing the proclamation. As a student who grew up in the post 9/11 era attending Dearborn Public Schools, our community can really serve as an example for the rest of the country at a time of such divisiveness, of how we live amongst each other regardless of any race, ethnicity, and how we live harmoniously, learning from one another, and advancing together as a community truly. And this proclamation just officially recognizing the contributions of Arab Americans, not only to Dearborn and to Michigan, but to this country as a whole, I really believe will allow our students to walk through the hallways with their heads lifted a little higher, whether you are Arab American or not, because Dearborn is a unique place. We are home to the largest concentration, and it's what makes Dearborn beautiful, what makes Dearborn great. So, I just wanted to offer my thank you and look forward to continuing our work together. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, moving right along, I'm going to ask Dr. Ball and Mr. Grzinski to come up to just briefly give us an update, and I do have a few things which is important on the water hydration and water testing. And a lot of us, we have the machine here in ASC, and today, if you can see the board, we lead by example with reducing paper with the electronic-
Except for those of us who forgot.
Well, no, because we have it here. We have Joanne who's got our-
President Petchlikoff, might I say one thing on the Arab American heritage?
Certainly.
It's really fitting that we have the first Arab American woman in Congress, just recently elected. We have a Somali woman also elected to Congress, and we have the first woman, the first Arab American, the first Muslim American Solicitor General of a state here in our own, General Fedwa Hamud. So, it's, the timing is really great, so, thank you.
Good evening, trustees. Here to update you on the hydration stations. Dr. Maleko pushed forward with his budget to get these stations installed. We've got about a dozen schools where we've put those in. Everything's going pretty good, and we're doing it at a reasonable cost.
I get to talk about water testing. Good evening, trustees. I get to talk about water testing. Over six weeks, we conducted 1,070 water tests throughout the district for all the K5 and K8 buildings. Of that 1,070 number, we had 11 samples that were high in lead. We're in the process of changing out the water fixtures and going back and retesting them.
And what's the schedule that we're going to keep to moving forward? Do you know?
I'm not sure. We haven't discussed that further.
Well, every year, we're going to try to go through this process, and we just stepped it up, and I think we're doing more than any other district from my understanding. And I'm going to commend Don and his staff and Tim, because 1,070 tested within about a month and a half was just amazing, and, you know, as we make safety number one. But we discussed this, so we have an environmental committee that meets regularly, that they're part of, and I'm a part of, and others, and we're making recommendations and obviously balancing the budget with how much we can do. And we did decide to start with, you know, the elementary buildings, and then we move into middle and high school and look at the areas that are used the most heavily. The hydration machines, though, are an added bonus because it goes with it and it complements it, and we know they have filtration and other things. So, as it promotes environmental friendly, it also promotes safe drinking water. So, that's why we have the two of them presenting it continuous, so it's a dual process, but we're going to continue to move forward. Understand, and I know trustee Barry, you've mentioned this, that we, there's no direction or requirements by the state. We are doing this on our own, investing money because we make student safety the number one issue here in Dearborn. And we're also helpful, thankful for the city because we do get the supply reports from them, and we know we have good water coming in from the city.
Well, this actually is just a topic of conversation at the Federation of Neighbor Association meetings last week where we had the mayor as our guest speaker, and then they all turned to me because they were asking about water safety, about what the schools were doing. So, I'm glad I'll be able to report back, and I did tell them that we do test our water supply within our buildings. So, but it's nice to hear that we are very current and up to date. Yes, trustee McDonald.
Of the 11 that sampled high for lead, if those were drinking fountains, were they closed off or?
They were taken out of service and replaced.
Were they all drinking fountains, or you said areas, I think is the word that you used?
Sources.
Sources, okay.
I'd have to go back and look. I know there was, there was a number of drinking fountains.
But they were taken out of commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think since, I know since I've been superintendent, since the big issue, you know, occurred in Flint, we, the team takes immediate action, and we had consultants recommend, but it's immediately resolved. Sometimes, it actually, with the consultants, it's just a flushing process because in older, and I can speak to, you know, older fountains that are not used, you know, they don't, the flushing needs to go, and then obviously, the contents, when they test them, and especially if it's done in the summer, and Don's helped me with the understanding, that's why these machines, the other thing is, you know, as you use it, you see the number go on the hydration. It says how many water bottles you're saving, but we know then that there's no flushing issues just because of the filters coming in. So, we recommend, you know, heavy usage on those.
Trustee Thor?
I know we've got a goal to get at least one hydration unit into each of the buildings, but when we, well, actually, this is going back to you then, Mr. Ball. When we've got fountains that are no longer passing and they're going to be taken out of service, are we then going to also be looking at those ones as being locations for the new drinking fountains, since they're already coming out?
You got it.
Okay.
Sure, so, one of the things we're going to see happen now is that the kids are going to start using the new fountains, and the older ones are going to sit. So, we're going to see that problem sort of increase. So, our district standard now is that every time we take a fountain out, a filter goes back in. It may not be a cooled drinking fountain, it may not be a bottle filler, but as we address them, every filter, it will have a filter installed as a retrofit. Great, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Just, I'm just going to move on along, and just a couple more. A quick word on school closure process. You know, my social media lights up, and we're at the state superintendent conference, and we've had all these days of school closures, and I probably did jinx this, and I know Representative Hamud said it because I said we haven't had anything we were going to, so you can put it on me. About a month ago on my Two Minute Tuesdays, where I go live on Instagram, but there is an intensive process in place. We have multiple people involved, and I do want to thank our crew, the departments, Dr. Ball, Mark Andrews, the entire executive team. I will tell you that there was the Friday where there were a lot of districts closed, and most of them were closed because buses were not working or they had pipe bursts or things. It wasn't because of the colder conditions. Our staff stepped up. I know we had buses running all night. We had people working, and so we have a great staff here that was able to get things moving. So, I want to thank, I'm not going to mention all the names, but there are many people involved. I'm thanking all of the departments because then we were able to have school on the Friday. And I also want to mention that, you know, at the conference, the state superintendent was there, and just to clarify for the public, we're allowed six days. We have five. We probably have one of the least numbers we've closed in the state. If we go beyond six, then you have to make up the days. You can apply for a waiver of three, but it's not guaranteed. Beyond the three, you get no, there's no additional days. There was question about whether or not, you know, the state of emergency declared by the governor will give you a loophole. No, it does not. It was actually, went to the Attorney General, and congratulations, trustee Hamud. I'm very proud of you as well. Pointing to her because it's coming out of your office, but the opinion was that, no, there's no flexibility within the law. You're stuck to those days. So, understand, as I'm getting all these social media posts, close, close school, be careful what you ask for because guess what?
Going to be open, open, open.
We're going to be coming back later in the year. We're going to have to, by law, reschedule those days. So, we're going to do our best to keep schools open, keep people in school. But again, we'll also remember that, you know, each individual parent can make their own decision. When I make a decision to close, we're making that decision for 21,000 students, 2,800 employees, and tens of thousands of parents. So, we obviously want to keep the schools open, but safety number one. And having said that, that day we were open Friday, we are fine. We had our 78% population, so 78% of the parents chose to, and those, I respect the rights either way, those that chose not to come in, and so we're going to continue to operate in that manner. And we have a very, you know, we're up early in the morning, and the board knows this, and I just want to let the board know, as I'm going to the conference, for the national conference, Ms. Ali Bazey's in charge, so she's actually going to be the one in charge. She may call me, but they're going to have to make all the calls because I'm in a different time zone, and so you'll be getting a text from her as updates. But understand too that I, it's so important to have multiple loopholes and redundancy, that I have a backup for me. I sleep with two phones by the bed in case one goes out, and then I have a backup person in case you can't get ahold of me. Dr. Ball has someone backup. We have multiple people in redundancy because it's so important, student safety. So, most, I will tell you, I'm pretty tired from the last couple of weeks, and obviously with the student passing, but our team steps up, and we work together, and so I want to thank the entire team, and I want to thank the board for their support with those decisions. I can tell you, as superintendents, it's one of the things we don't enjoy doing, and I think I told the board when I interviewed, you know, this was the one, but you've got to do it, and we're here to do the job, and we'll do the job, so.
And I just would like to reaffirm that when we make a decision to have the schools open, that's a choice as well for our parents who need to have their child in school. Just like the parents have a choice to keep their child home, we need to give them that option to send their child to school. And if we deem it safe to send their children to school, then we need to offer that opportunity for those parents to make that choice to send them to school. You always have the choice to keep them at home if you're not comfortable with sending them, but we need to have both options open when it's at all possible.
So, my last thing I want to mention is, I just want to thank the entire school community for their outpouring of support last week and probably going back a couple of months, but just the positive remarks, and I just want to say, you know, we're, it's a great school community. I gave, I know board members were there, and I had my family. I gave a stated, an address before the entire state superintendent association. So, I appreciate your support. I appreciate the outpouring of support, and such great things going on with a lot of people that are working hard. And so, really, this is a teamwork, and I want to thank all of you, and thank the board, and thank my entire, the team that we have here, and the school community, the parents, the students. Just great. And the last thing with that, just, there's been kind of a rumor out there. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, keep it brief, that I was applying for the state superintendent. I am not applying for the state superintendent, so just will kind of put it out there right now. And I'm not saying never, maybe in the future, but right now is not the right time. We've got a lot of work here together, so I look forward to hopefully many more years working with the board and with the community to provide high-quality education for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Non-agenda items?
I think that was.
Oh, that was.
We're to recognition.
All right, recognition and acknowledgements. First, we have commendations, and we have Fortson High School seniors will be reading commendations today. We have Louis Aburukba. Is that how you say your name?
Yeah.
Loay. And Yasmin Slimani.
First of all, we'd like to say good evening and thank you to Superintendent Dr. Maleko, distinguished board members, and executive directors, and fellow community members. My name is Loay Aburukba.
And my name's Yasmin Slimani.
Okay. We're honored here to read the commendations at today's meeting.
And we're very proud to be here tonight on behalf of reports and high school tractors.
I'll start with administration. Commendations to Director Don Ball and Engineer Gary Shelby for the very early morning work during the water pipe break at William Ford Elementary School. The pipe broke during the bitter cold of January 31st at about 3:00 a.m. Thanks to the all-day work of Principal David Higgins, Secretary Sandra Asaf, and Engineer Shelby for developing the plan to ensure classrooms were ready for students when school resumed February 1st. Also appreciation to Assistant Principal Raida Akruj for coming in to assist. Special recognition to all of the William Ford teachers who offered to come in during the cold day to help ensure the school is ready for the students.
For high school acknowledgements, commendations to Leah Busi and Lena Alcusi from the Dearborn Center for Math, Science, and Technology. Both teens were recognized by the Michigan Council of Women in Technology Foundation's 13th Annual Web Design Competition. Busi from Edsel Ford High School received a third-place award in the high school beginning design competition, and Alcusi from Fortson received an honorable mention in the advanced design category. Congratulations to our Edsel Ford High School singers who competed on February 2nd at the MSVMA District 12 solo and ensemble. Nora Heaton earned a two rating for her solo performance, and Elizabeth and Catherine Dix were awarded one ratings for each of their solos and their duet. The Dix will advance to the state level. Congratulations to them, and many thanks to Dr. Sean Jackman, who served as their accompanist.
Thank you again for allowing us to read the commendations for today's meeting. Good night.
Good night, thank you.